Call the Monthly Board of Education, me in order. Can everybody please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Mr. President makes a motion, that's second. Second on favor show hand. Citizens' statements and participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had no one request participation as per Board Policy BDDH.
Thank you. Written communications?
We had no written communications either.
Military liaison and update?
Yes. Good evening. Just wanted to say on behalf of Major General Donna Martin and Colonel Towns, Garrison Commander, they're very pleased with this year's school start. Average military child moves four to six times in their educational career, so they're very appreciative. I'll be at the Pentagon next week and I'll continue to praise the Board and the community on the relationship that they have here at Fort Leonard Wood and the School Board. It's just been an outstanding partnership and thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We've seen General here at the football game and she's welcome to everything we've got, so we appreciate them being a part with us. District announcements, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two buildings with us tonight and I just had breakfast last Friday with Piney Ridge, which is one of my five favorite meals of the day. And so, had a great time. Tonight we will recognize Piney Ridge Center and PIC Alternative School. During our Board of Education Spotlight, we will recognize one classified, one certified employee and a collaborative team from each of these two buildings. Want to thank everyone for participating in the Tiger Festival of Nations on Friday and especially thank our volunteers who made it possible. It wasn't 100 degrees this year, so it was much, much nicer, but excellent job. Thank you to Mrs. Ward and our district diversity team for setting that up. It's a great, great event. Homecoming is Friday, September 27th and the theme is Heroes vs. Villains: Tigers Save the Day. The Avengers has even hit the homecoming place now here. It will be a half-day of school. The parade starts at 2:30 PM in downtown Waynesville and will end at the middle school. And Community Pride Night is at 4:30 at WHS. The crowning of the homecoming queen is at 6:30 PM. The football game will kick off at 7:00 PM against Springfield Central. Businesses who wish to sponsor a float or have their windows entered into a homecoming business window decoration contest should contact Tricia Foster at tfoster@waynesville.k12mo.us. September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and the Waynesville R6 School District will host three opportunities for parents and students to learn more about suicide awareness and prevention. The sessions will be offered as part of the Tiger Pride Program from 5:30 to 6:30 PM on the following dates and locations. September the 19th, Wood Elementary Library; October the 3rd, East Elementary Library; and October the 17th, Waynesville Middle School Library. I also know that with Tiger Pride, we will have bowling prevention as well later in the school year. Future Cheerleading Clinic will be on October the 5th and all participants must register. Forms are available at the elementary schools and on the district's Facebook page. That's a busy night at the football game, for sure. And then Military Appreciation Night will be held October the 25th during the Varsity Home Football Game. All active-duty service members and military retirees with a military ID will be admitted to the game free of charge.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. Consent agenda, bid recommendations, Dr. Berger?
Yes, just one mention on that one. That was, we shared that at Board Retreat, but there's no shortage of realtors in our community. We notified directly 16 and just had the one go, but I'm proud to have the one, for sure, so.
Financials?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The financials for September 10th, 2019, in the MOSIP account, $44,945,572.47. $10.5 in CDs with the Bank of Crocker. In our general account, $2,477,534.13. Payroll account, $4,803.69. Total funds, $57,927,910.29.
All right, thank you. Any motion approved? Consent agenda items A through G?
I'll make that motion.
There's your two. Janet and then Mike on the second, on favor show hand. Motion carries. Spotlight on education. PIC Educational?
See, Ms. Hedrick's gone.
Ms. Witt.
Ms. Witt.
Yeah.
Or Ms. Semper.
Let's get this adjusted for a four-foot-nine girl here. All right. Mr. President, School Board Members and Administration, PIC Alternative would like to recognize Mrs. Andrea Atkins for our Certified Spotlight on Education. Mrs. Atkins displays patience and self-control. She helps teachers enforce classroom rules and maintains order. One of her many talents is giving clarity and other perspectives on math lessons, instilling in students the desire to learn. She remains curious and continues to enhance her own education through college courses. Mrs. Atkins is a valuable member because of her willingness to help our school and engage students in a positive manner. Congratulations and thank you to Mrs. Andrea Atkins, our Classified Spotlight on Education recipient.
Okay.
Congratulations.
All right, Mr. President, School Board Members and Administration, PIC Alternative would like to recognize Mr. Sam Hall for our Certified Spotlight on Education. Mr. Hall joined the PIC staff full-time last December. Since then, he has worked hard to build a rapport with our students. He works with our homebound students, teaching them the skills they need to succeed. He sets a high standard for his students and instills in them the confidence to reach those standards. Mr. Hall's leadership ability can be seen not only in the classroom, but in school in general. Outside of the classroom, Mr. Hall volunteers his time motivating and encouraging our Waynesville High School team members, football team members. Please help me congratulate Mr. Sam Hall for our Certified Spotlight on Education. The military stance, you see it? Congratulations there. All right, and last but certainly not least, I'd like for the whole PIC staff to come forward. We would just like to congratulate you and thank you for a job well done every single day. Thank you for putting your best foot forward and this is on behalf of Tammy, who couldn't be here with us tonight, but she's so proud of the staff that she gets an opportunity to work with every day. So, thank you. Guys, please give them a round of applause.
Congratulations, everybody. Piney Ridge Center, Mrs. Martinez, Ms. Modio.
Let me fix this. All right. Good evening, Mr. President, Board and Administration. Piney Ridge Facility would like to recognize Ms. Jennifer Adams for our Spotlight on Classified. Ms. Adams is the backbone of our entire operation at Piney Ridge Center. She does more than any of us ever know to keep our day-to-day tasks simple and organized. Ms. Adams is the glue that keeps us together. The students love her just as much as the staff. She is always in a good mood and ready to help with any issues. Ms. Adams always stops and listens to the changes we want, we want for students regardless of how busy she is. She also ensures that we run like a well-oiled machine. I know without her, being as amazing as she is with keeping student schedules organized, changed, and changed again, ensuring we get our office supplies, taking care of whatever mishap that may happen on any given day, stopping what she is doing when she hears a student yelling or a loud commotion to ensure we are safe, scheduling IEPs and 504 meetings, stopping what she is doing and being a shoulder for us. I know speaking for myself, our lives would be a mess without her. She always stops what she is doing to listen for our students' benefit. She ensures students are enrolled as quickly as possible and to get them into the classroom. At any moment, at any moment, she is always there to support us with any of our concerns or comments. Without Mrs. Adams, our school would not be the amazing learning environment that it is. Even though she has a limited interaction with the students, they are aware of what she does for her and what she means to the building. Some of the comments from the students are, "She is always nice and sweet to me. Thanks for getting me enrolled so fast so I could come to school. Thank you for getting all of the kids in our school. Ms. Adams is caring and helpful to the teachers and the students. She is kind and gentle with me. Ms. Adams is a very dedicated secretary. Not only does she oversee the daily operation of the school, but she also supports the principal, teachers, and also ensures that we have what we need to be successful for our students." This task is compounded by the fact that we have grades 1 through 12 and serve students with special needs. Jen has successfully carried out various tasks required of her as secretary in our efforts to excel here at Piney Ridge. She is not so much than our, she is much more than our administrative assistant. She is capable of helping everyone that walks through our door, including the teachers. She might not see every student in our building, but every student knows what she does for them and they are respectful of her. Ms. Adams is an asset to all students and teachers at Piney Ridge and we are so thankful she is here.
Congratulations.
All right. Mr. President, Board of Education Administrators, I'd like to present Ms. Amber York Barber as our Certified Employee Spotlight. Ms. Amber York Barber came to Piney Ridge from the middle school last year. She hit the ground running and bought and brought so many great things into the 7th and 8th grade classroom. The kids are respectful of her and for the most part, keeps a quiet, peaceful classroom and is not, in a not always quiet and peaceful environment. She handles the piney moments like she's been doing it for years. She is great to work with and always contributes 110% to whatever we are working on. She truly has been an asset to the Piney Ridge School. Ms. York has an amazing attitude towards all of our students, even the ones she does not interact with daily. The middle schoolers that become 9th graders always go out of their way to say hi to her because they miss her class. Ms. York is always looking for ways to improve her classroom and is a powerful role model in the building for all of our kids. This is evident from what our students have to say about her. My name is Taven and since I've been in Piney Ridge, Mrs. York has always shown us nothing but respect. Ms. York helps me get better at math and my other subjects. Ms. York is not the kind of teacher that says, "Get to work or get out of my class." Ms. York has always helped me to become, has also helped me to become a better person. Ms. York is the best. Ms. York, thank you for what you've done for me. When I first came here, I really did not like math, but you've inspired me to really try at math. I have been here with you for a whole year and you've taught me a whole lot about school and manners since I've been here. Before I came here, I did not like school, but now I do. Thank you, from Evan. She is the sunlight when the kids see the darkness. She never fails any one of them. Thank you, Ms. York.
All right. Mr. President, Board and Administrators, I'd like to bring up the piney staff is the spotlight for our education collaborative team because we all work so well together and what we do at Piney wouldn't be possible without the whole staff.
I want to thank both buildings. You guys take somewhere that a lot. As we discussed earlier in State Session, back in the 1900s when we were all in school, that was thought of to be places that you would never come back from. And you guys on both buildings make it a great place to be. The kids are happy. I've been in buildings and you guys have do a miraculous job. Thank you. Transportation Employee of the Month, Mrs. Bills?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is again my honor to recognize this month's Transportation Employee of the Month, Glenn Kofelt. Glenn is our district crossing guard and he also helps our buses to back up safely in the morning. Glenn is very dependable and a positive team member. We appreciate the work that he does and congratulations as this month's Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Moving to discussion item, A, Waynesville Middle School Phase II Construction Update. Dr. Berger?
Yes, our monthly visit from Don Hussman, DHA, will give us our monthly progress report.
Good evening. Not too many slides tonight. We were onsite last Wednesday and finally, things are beginning to turn around from the standpoint of we're not taking things away, but we're now adding. So, you can see here, some underground utility work was beginning, or has begun and you can see quite a few trenches here in this photo. Have a couple of slides of the beginning of footings and that's always kind of a good thing, especially when it's dry. And the, these footings, on my way down this evening, I stopped by the site and they are now concrete, so they're no longer forms, but there were a lot of footings going in. You can see all of the rebar that's, and these footings are really massively large to hold up this portion of the building. Demolition is finally complete and there's still a few items that are still onsite, but that's a view in the gymnasium, looks kind of unusual with the floor completely covered in plywood to protect it. And I think there's another slide, yeah, here, this one's, looks kind of unusual with the stage sort of illuminated from the side there, but the curtain is down and the structure is now being improved, so it is moving along. And I believe the last one, little dark, but it's under the gymnasium floor there and that's showing that the concrete wall partitions are now going in place. So, we are making progress and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Thank you very much. FY '20 Facilities Review, Dr. Berger?
Thank you, Mr. President. And following the focus on Waynesville Middle School, we'll have an overview of all of our facilities, brief overview. Couple of things different from this presentation than in years past. One is I pared it down a little bit. A little bit of the detail for each facility is, I've deleted that out and really the format will be when we either acquired or constructed the building. And then a few of the more significant renovations, historical renovations. And then in bold, you'll see the more recent projects of that building. And the second thing is focus of our summer retreat. Typically, we spend a lot of time on this slide during this review, is our multi-year plan. So, we're still got one important piece and that's the patron input of our multi-year plan. That'll be coming out here in the late months of September. We'll get that input back. That input is kind of framed out with much of the input the Board gave during the summer retreat. We'll come back and hopefully, the timing will work out about Christmas, or Christmas, winter retreat, Christmas retreat, and we don't theme it Christmas, but over the Christmas break. And when we come back in there, we'll, we'll look at that again and kind of map that multi-year plan out. So, with that, we'll get started. It's been busy since 13, $67 million in hardening the schools along with new and renovated construction. I laid those out there for you. Lot of work being done in really a fairly short period of time. Start off with the high school, kind of, we call it the flagship sometimes of our campus facilities, but again, that format, taking out a lot of those smaller renovations and going down to just some of those larger things and the, within them listed out, but at the end there, the things that are going on fiscal year 19, which is be the previous year, and 20, and lots of times, those kind of overlap. That high school utilities access road has been on our multi-year plan for a few years now and with some of the work we were doing on Tiger Stadium, kind of held that up, but that's back in the budget for this year and we hope to get that concluded. Career Center, purchased in '03, of course, and for our longer-seated Board members know that, that history and renovated in '09. More recently, the secure vestibules and the security bay and rear entrance gates. If you noticed, they were actually working on the secure vestibules. Those will wrap up soon. The security bay and rear entrance gates, the security bay gates are up, the rear entrance gates, the poles are set, and I believe our welding class is constructing the gates and we'll get those put up too. So, that'll replace those wooden sawhorses. We're anxious about that. Mr. Hussman, kind of viewed progress on Waynesville Middle School Phase II, but of course, we haven't been in Phase I too long. Got a picture up there from the construction, a really awesome picture that was taken by drone, and then a couple of pictures of the new facility and that bottom is the rendering of Phase II completion. Waynesville 6th Grade Center, secure vestibules in 2020, still hammering those out and marquee signage, that's a really, a little bit smaller item in scope, but put it in there. It's certainly been a high-profile, great partnership with West Side there and really has a lot of visibility there. That's, that's a really nice sign. East Elementary, originally constructed in '66 and then the few more minor renovations with down to below. Per Prop 1, had the security video upgrade in 19, secure vestibules in 2020 and playground equipment addition, 2020 is being worked on right now. I drove by there today and I think I've got one picture in here that will show some of that. Freedom Elementary, constructed in '06, security video, we'll have a bid spec out for that this year. Secure vestibules and playground equipment for them. There's, their playground is not in progress, but as soon as Kevin and his guys get off of East Elementary, they'll head right over to Freedom and get started with it. PIC Educational and Volunteer Facility, originally constructed in '61. They'll get some marquee signage this year in 2020. We've kind of threw the red tape and it's on the schedule now and I'll pick up on that in a future slide here in just a minute. Wood Elementary, originally built in '58, asphalt overlay out there, that's completed, it looks great. Secure vestibules, exterior renovation and marquee signage, all those three things are coming. They're in the budget, they're, you know, be completed certainly by the Christmas break, but hopefully, a little later this, into the fall. Partridge Elementary, originally built in '62, and this gets a little redundant because also secure vestibules, exterior renovation and marquee signage. Thale Elementary, originally in '59, secure vestibules, exterior renovation and marquee signage. Williams, and I always think of that, you know, they're connected buildings, but you have the original building, which is a wonderful building, 34,000 square foot that we use, you know, some of it. There's a lot of that that's just completely unoccupied, but a wonderful building. And then the addition in '12 added 30,000 square foot and again, secure vestibules, which it had, exterior renovation in 2020, marquee signage. The had been built, the had been building, we haven't done anything with since the security upgrades in '16, nothing of significance. Maintenance and food, Mr. Pritchard's crew laid the concrete for, let's see, '17. We did this lean-to structure that's been really useful for us, but serves our needs. We've probably been pressed with space just a little bit with the one-on-one, one-to-one initiative, but we've been able to handle it, but we're kind of starting to try to think if we need to create some, you know, designated space that we won't, don't cheat into the maintenance building quite so much. We've also used the administrative building space too for that too. Transportation Department, 92, just at 6600 square feet. Did the exterior lighting upgrade last year, nothing of any significance planned for this year. Sports Complex, one thing to note is that last bullet there, the security video in 19, we got that in when we did East and so actually, we have that surveilled too, that whole space and it's, does a really nice job over there. Slaughter Field and Tiger Stadium, we've had a lot of attention directed at our concession stand renovation that Dr. Patterson's kids and the building trades helped us out with. Kevin's team supported that and kind of did some finish work on it, but it's got a lot of attention. It's a really, really nice middle school facility now, so if you haven't stopped by and dropped in there, dropped by and actually see a game, it's awesome. Per Prop 1, we're scheduled out for our district security upgrades and we're, you know, it's a pliable schedule, but gives us an idea of who's going to get security upgrades in the future. Kind of moving from, like I said, a multi-year plan. We do things every year and in lieu of a multi-year plan, we're looking at, that's a real quick picture of the playground up there and just a few of the projects that are going on here and what is quarterly report that I'm going to start providing for the Board. So, that may be done through Board Memo, but certainly out, in absence of the five-year plan, we thought this would be a good time to introduce this and may come in our, in our annual review as just the first quarter or whatever quarter we're in, but then each quarter will be provided at minimum by Board Report. And that would give you, the Board, an opportunity to kind of be able to monitor what we've got going on, but also if you have any questions of any particular project, you're, always feel free to give us a call and, and ask those questions. But just kind of orientate you to this right now, this be moving each quarter, but all of our current projects in maintenance are over there in that left-hand side that's a column there. The maintenance in the middle, those won't move much, but you know, perhaps second, third quarter, snow removal become a much- removal will become a much bigger issue for us. And then in the planning stages, looking over there, what is on schedule, and it could be on a multi-year schedule, but more likely it's on this year's schedule, but maybe in a planning phase. So just to highlight a few of those things. And I've put some things that are a little smaller in cost, a little smaller in scope as well, but significant enough that, believe me, they're on Mr. Pritchard's radar. But an example would be the library tech room, and it's complete. And if you haven't taken a look, you can, after the Board meeting, peek into that. It looks awesome. We'll unlock it for you. But place where the kids, it's kind of a lounge and the kids can recharge and Wi-Fi'd and it's really good space for our students. Highlighted a couple of things. This is in the planning stage, this backup transformer. So this has always been an issue where the transformer was placed for the high school completion project. Very late in the game, the city brought it to our attention. They've been making some planning, some plans. We met with them. They have acquired a backup transformer. And so now we're kind of in this planning phase of can we get the transformer set already? So there would be a minimal time if there was something, you know, probably a little more catastrophic in scope where that transformer went down. But we'd already have that transformer set and we'd just have to jump over from our, what would be the discarded transformer over to the new one. So that's still in the planning stage. It is not budgeted for this year. If we do anything that's going to have a fiscal note to it, obviously the Board would approve that or bring it to the Board for approval. So more to come on that issue in the spring. Looking down at the Career Center, I touched on the bay and rear gates. If you jump over to the right, this campus projects. In between for our building trades classes, in between spec houses, we identify campus projects that can be tackled by that group. And concession stand is a perfect example of one, but Dr. Patterson, her guys down there have been great to work with and trying to target some of those too. And we think the kids really like those because, you know, they get a little legacy that they built the concessions down at the Waynesville Middle School. So they're popular, I think, with the kids and they're certainly take a little bit of pressure sometimes off of our maintenance team. Sixth Grade Center, I mentioned the marquee sign. It's done. It's under, the first quarter is a current project, but it is complete. We've got these FEMA notice of interest in for virtually every building that we have. So I just saw some email correspondence with Ms. Allen that I was CC'd on, where we've renewed our notice of interest for any FEMA acquisition, for FEMA shelters that we would be eligible for, like East Elementary. So those are active and, you know, we're waiting on funding and approval. They don't even make the five-year plan, but they could jump up in priority because if we became eligible all of a sudden, I'd be bringing that information to the Board. I wouldn't expect that that would happen in twos or threes, but I think we'd be real fortunate if we even get one, you know, in the next year or two. So. A couple highlights over here, an example of talking about not as a current project, but these exterior renovations, secure vestibule, marquee signage for virtually all the post schools. And so that's more of a planning stage. In fact, I just got confirmed for, I think, two of my three or two of my four post buildings for the exterior renovation. The Board approved about $25,000 for each one of those buildings. And I've kind of roughed out a budget for them. I hand them to the Principal and then we get a little input from them if we need to redirect some of that funding. Bring your attention to two more and then I'll close this out. The DOD assessment, facility assessment. I spoke to the Board over the summer retreat that that information was pending. It has been released. We still did not make the list for pick to be on there. Hard for us to believe, but there are some facilities out there that are, that they've at least assessed as a higher need than pick. So we need to, you know, probably get a secondary plan, a contingent plan for what we need to do to improve that facility. And there are some other funding streams out there that will be tuned into. So maybe more to come and appropriate place in the planning column. Transportation, Phase Two, you know, we've got more than $1 million invested in the first phase of that, where basically the site work was accomplished. Did a real good job, I think, of being, a lot of forethought, but really the need now is the actual facility. I mentioned 6,600 square foot, running the size operation that we do. That's not on the schedule for, currently for 2020, but when we bring that facility plan back for the working, work session over the Christmas break or at least over the winter break, whenever we, when that is scheduled for the Board to look at that, we'll try to appropriately place that to wherever the priority meets. But it certainly is a rising priority. With that, I'll entertain any questions the Board might have on our facilities report. More to come soon on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Williams Early Childhood Program Update, Mrs. Mitchell?
Good evening and thank you. We're going to review Williams Early Childhood Center. We house three programs out at Williams. We house the preschool, the PACE program, we house early childhood special education, and we house Parents as Teachers. So we service students who are ages three to five years old. If it's in our regular ed setting, they have to be three by August 1st or they have to be four by August 1st to be in our regular education side. If they are on our special education side, we add them whenever they turn three throughout the school year. So it's also important to know that at our building, when students come in and they need services, we do all of our therapies in-house. We have speech and language pathologists, we have occupational therapists, we have physical therapists. They also have access to visual impairment instructor, deaf educator, and a counselor through teletherapy. And then we added music therapy this year, and that has been really positive for both our students and our teachers. So each child who is admitted to our program goes through the dial screening. Because we use Title I funding for our program, we have to show that we're reaching the kids that need, that have the greatest needs. So we give priority to them. So our students go through a dial screening. We do those once a month. We also do parent referral screenings. If a parent is concerned with any of their child's development, we do those once a week. And then students are ranked from lowest to highest on their score to fill the classes. And we do maintain a waiting list for both our three-year-old class and our four-year-old class. Special education, anytime a student would qualify for special education services, they are added as promptly as possible. Enrollment in our PACE Parent and Child Education Program, we have approximately 144 students. Each four-year-old class has 15 students in the morning and 15 students in the afternoon. And then ECSC has approximately 180 to 200 students by the end of every school year. We do use a state-approved curriculum. It's called the Emerging Language and Literacy Curriculum. Each unit lasts for two weeks and is focused on a particular theme. In the month of August, the unit was Same, Different, and Feelings. That's around a book that says we're the same, we're different, and we're all wonderful. It's a great diversity unit that we do. And in September, the students started studying shapes and grocery stores. So we have stocked our little grocery stores and the kids are starting to learn how to check people out and run the cash register. And then we'll finish September with an apple unit. There's lots of graphing and apples. And as you see Chatsen sitting there, Chatsen used to be a great fan of apples until he had to do taste testing in all 15 classrooms and now he's a little bit on apples. So learning centers, this, all of these units are developed around learning centers. We know that young children learn best through play and we use purposeful play. So in each unit, the students participate in circle time, shared storybook time, phonological awareness groups, it's kind of a precursor to some reading groups, and centers, dramatic play, math and science, construction, tactile, creative book, art, technology, and literacy. And I do have to say, in one of our classrooms today, as I walk through, they have the grocery store set up, but they set it up like Price Cutter, so they've also put a Starbucks in there. So you can go into Starbucks and what do you have at Starbucks? But Wi-Fi, and so they've moved their technology center into their Starbucks center. So if anybody wants to come up to Ms. Stewart's room and shop and get a Starbucks, you're welcome to. So, you know, while we're all having fun and learning through play, we are doing an amazing job with our kids, getting them ready for kindergarten. And as you can look at all of our standards that we have on there and where we hit on our proficiency and advanced rates. And again, you know, I bring your attention to, we try to identify kids who need us the most. And I'm very proud of my staff that they can take these students and they push them to these levels. I did note a couple of things, just one on ELA and one on math. Our letter identification, 88% of our kids were proficient and advanced in 2018. And we ended last year at 92% of our students were proficient and advanced. And that is something that my staff is very proud of. Math is something that we have pushed very hard on. Rope counting is the one I highlighted on this. In 2018, we had 82% of our students who were proficient and advanced. We ended last year with 89% of our students proficient and advanced. Look at all those smiles, aren't they precious? That was our farm unit. Parents as Teachers is another program that we house. Parents as Teachers, we have two parent educators, Beth Armstrong and Sheila Layman. They do work 12 months out of the year. They really network with our community and our resources, Genesis House and such things. They do home visits every month, they do play groups, and they do community activities. And they serve children who are prenatal to three years old. They really partner with us as well. If they've got a family who has concerns, they really help bridge that gap for that student to start at Williams. And then they have that relationship with the parent to really answer those questions and help navigate that process for them. So our two educators service approximately 74 families. Most families have more than one student, so that translates to approximately 100 children. They do have a focus on sometimes teen moms, so they try to get them in and get them the support they need. And they're looking at a new curriculum for next year or whenever it comes out that focuses on military families and help families deal with deployments and then also when family members come back or just the frequent moves. And I think that's a really powerful piece that they can add to their program. So home visits, they do go into the home and they make visits with the families on a monthly basis. Additional visits may be scheduled if the child has high needs. They use a foundational curriculum and it looks at how the family is, how they're doing, developmental-centered parenting. And then they also do developmental assessments to help flag any concerns that might be coming up as these children grow. Every Wednesday is weekly play group at Williams. You can come by from 9:30 to 11:00. They have two different ways they do this. Sometimes they're in a little room where they have dramatic play and different play centers set up. And then once a month, they go over to the gym for a lot of gross motor fun time. And it's a great time for moms and other family members to network and a great time to teach some socialization skills to these little kids. And so we have our little babies come in on Wednesdays. It's pretty sweet to see. Advisory Board Meetings, we do have two of these per year. We have one in September of this year and we'll have one again in March. These meetings kind of give an overview of the program and it's a time for some of our community resources to network together. We have First Steps that attend, we have the Genesis House representatives, and we have Head Start, we have several people that come through. And they're able to talk and then we coordinate services and try to get the families connected as well as we can so they can be helped. So they are very proud to be able to service our families that come in. So if anybody has any questions or concerns about Parents as Teachers, they're welcome to call that number. Or they can call Williams and we'll get them in touch with the parent educators. Does the Board members have any questions?
Thank you very much. Proposed Job Descriptions, Mrs. Bills?
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached proposed job descriptions are presented to the Board for review as a first reading. 2.22.2 Instructional Support Server Specialist, 5.1.2 Speech and Language Pathologist Assistant, 5.3.1 School Resource Officer. Administration will request approval at the regular October meeting.
Are there any comments or questions? All right, thank you. Moving to Action Item, MSBA Policy and Procedure Updates, Second Reading, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had several policies and procedures for your consideration. I did not receive any questions between last month's first reading and now, so we'll recommend these for approval.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keenan makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Dearing, second. All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Be Tier Two sponsorship for SOP partnership?
Thank you, Mr. President. As discussed during study session, for the last two years, we have been Tier Two sustaining members of the Sustainable Ozarks Partnership and also LWI. So we are asking again to continue our Tier Two sponsorship for the upcoming year.
Do I have a motion? Janet makes a motion. And second, all in favor, show hands. Seven oh, motion carries. Approval Student Information System, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration recommends entering into a contract with Tyler Technologies to utilize CISC-12, the Student Information System, and Munis Financial System. The first year cost for these systems is $496,175.30. Data migration and training will begin in January of 2020 with a full launch date of July 1 of 2020.
I'm sure we've got all of our comments and questions done. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Keenan makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Crater, second. All in favor, show hands. Seven oh, motion carries. Closed session, closed record, closed vote is allowed by, huh?
We got one more.
Just test run. Oh, yeah. This is my fault.
Excellent job that you did, though.
MSBA Board Delegate, Dr. Henry.
Yes, as has become customary for us, just due to schedules and things of that nature, MSBA had changed the delegate, or in the recent, within the last year, I believe, changed the delegate procedure to having the President be the default person to be the delegate, to the delegate meeting at the annual meeting in the fall. We have homecoming that week, as you're all aware. And so our President, though he really wants to be at MSBA, is not able to. And we also have Dr. Fulmer, who has to be at MSBA for his various elected positions. So to do that, we have to ask the Board to name, have the MSBA delegate be Dr. Fulmer so he can attend and vote at the meeting.
I'll be there on Thursday and Saturday. Sorry about Friday, buddy. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keenan makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Can I make that motion, too?
Quinn, you get the second. All in favor, show hands. Okay, motion carries. Close, there's a softball game I'm wanting to get out of here. Closed session, closed record, closed vote is allowed by RSMO 610-021, Section 3, Hiring, Firing, and Disciplining or Promotion of Employees, Section 13, Individual Personal Records, Performance Ratings. Do I have a motion here in closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Keenan makes a motion. Mr. Pondham, seconds. Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, we're in closed session.